This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. It is January 6th, 2022. I am Greg Hooks, my chair of the Planning Commission for the City of Gig Harbor, and I'm calling the meeting to order. First order of business will be a roll call. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Grina.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
And Commissioner Saltus and Commissioner Bennett are absent this evening. From the city, we have Katrina Knudsen. Good to see you. Carl DeCemus. And as ever, the inevitable. Michelle Thomas. Okay. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting dated December 16th. Is there any, are there any corrections or to the minutes? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I will move for approval.
Second.
So we have a second to the motion. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none will have a vote to accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So the agenda item for this evening is the interim zoning controls related to E S S H B 1220 relating to transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters and emergency housing. And we're going to have a study session this evening, so I will turn it over to our city staffers for that, and I'll let you all lay out the ground rules of how you would like, you know, to, for this to go. If you want to do a presentation with questions to follow, or just open discussion along the way, if people have questions, so whichever way you think best.
Thank you, Chair. I will be taking the lead on the presentation this evening, and Carl, Michelle, if you'd like to jump in at any point, feel free. If you have a PowerPoint presentation, Chair, if that would be okay, I would like to turn my camera off, just because I'm at my home office, so you won't be staring at my at my face while I'm presenting, but I can take questions during the presentation. That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. And just as a reminder to the commissioners, to please mute your microphones during the presentation. Appreciate that.
All right, let's see if I can. Shell teaches me how to do these things, and then I don't know. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Anything working on your end? Can you see the slide as your screen?
Yes.
All right. So as the Chair mentioned, tonight, we're here to discuss interim zoning controls that were passed by the City Council at their last meeting in September. These are regarding and relating to a bill that was passed by the Washington State Legislature in May of last year regarding emergency shelters and housing. A really quick background, as I mentioned, it was passed by the state, signed in May, and it does, it's in regard to transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and emergency shelters. The primary reason for this bill and the support for it was due to the growing affordable housing and homelessness crisis that's occurring in our state. The intent of this bill was to have all cities within Washington allow transitional and permanent supportive housing as a means for affordable housing and as a way to prevent homelessness. The bill requires jurisdictions such as Gig Harbor to undertake some immediate actions which we have, and then also several long-term amendments to the comprehensive plan policies that we will be undertaking with your assistance, Planning Commission, throughout our 2024 comprehensive plan update. So again, in response to this, we passed ordinance, the City Council passed 14, ordinance 1466 on December, September 27th, excuse me. And that is pursuant to the moratoria section of the Growth Management Act, which is R C W 3670 A 390. There's a lot of questions about what these new types of uses are. I will say from the very beginning, none of these uses are defined within the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, nor are they uses within our current use table, or nor are they permanent uses within our use table. But just to go over them briefly, transitional housing is a project that provides housing and supportive services to homeless persons or families for up to two years, and that has a purpose of facilitating movement of homeless persons and families into independent living. Permanent supportive housing is subsidized leased housing with no length of stay, paired with onsite, offsite voluntary services to support the person living there with a disability in order to be a successful tenant in a housing arrangement, also to improve health status and connect the residents with housing and treatment, et cetera. Emergency shelters are a place of supportive services and safe temporary lodging on a 24-hour, seven-day-per-week basis to victims of domestic violence and their children. And emergency housing is a facility whose primary purpose is to provide temporary or transitional shelter and supportive services to the homeless, homeless in general, or to a specific population of homeless for no more than 60 days. After those definitions, we've also cited the R C W or WAC, again, because we do not define those currently within the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. As part of this requirement, the City Council has undertaken some actions. They've conducted a public hearing pursuant to the the moratoria section of the Growth Management Act. There is a requirement, once something is passed under, for a moratorium or under interim zoning controls, that public comment be sought within 60 days of approval of those interim controls. And that was conducted at the first meeting in October. For this particular item, there was one one member of the public who spoke about some concerns about emergency shelters, but there was not a large body of public comments for staff to pass on to the commission. Additionally, the council did adopt findings that they're required to pursuant to the Growth Management Act for the ordinance, and directed that the Planning Commission consider what was passed to see if that should be put into code on a permanent formal basis, or if there are tweaks that the commission believes that should be made to what was passed under the interim controls. So briefly, now I will go over the bill that was passed by the state and just give a brief overview of what the different sections are and what the city requirements are. Under section one of the bill, it is requiring updating housing goals. It updated the housing goal definition within the Growth Management Act. And instead of encouraging affordable housing, it now requires jurisdictions to accommodate for that. This was done because, I think, as you know, we've addressed policies here, encouraging is not necessarily an actionable item. So the state really wants this to become something that is actionable and very immediate steps taken to address this crisis. So the city policy actions pertaining to this will need to be addressed in the 2024 comprehensive plan update. If you will recall, I believe in December, I presented to the commission the budget for 2022 that was approved by council last year, and that budget does include money for a housing plan that will help to address section one as part of the comp plan update, and we're hoping that we can get some good data and some good initial policies for commission's consideration in the, for the comp plan effort. Section two of the bill requires jurisdictions to inventory, analyze, plan, and accommodate for moderate, low, very low, and extremely low income households. The bill also requires jurisdictions such as Gig Harbor to inventory for accommodation of emergency housing, emergency shelters, and permanent supportive housing. Now, the city, currently, we do not have an inventory, a plan to accommodate affordable housing units, let alone moderate, low, very low, and extremely low income households. We also, again, do not define the types of housing that's described later on in that, the second paragraph. However, similar to the Housing Action Plan that I talked about under section one, we're hoping to get through that work plan item, we're hoping to be able to inventory and analyze the need with this moderate, low, very low, extremely low income within the City of Gig Harbor. Again, I will just be very honest, our comprehensive plan is very sparse on affordable housing, and I know the previous mayor wanted to tackle that and have the city join the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, which is a great first step, I think, in working regionally to accommodate for affordable housing. However, these two first sections of the bill are saying the city alone has has to analyze and accommodate for affordable housing. So we can, and it's great that the city is working on a regional level toward affordable housing, but these two first sections are really saying we really need to do the work and analyze what our city needs, what our residents need, and what the future demand for these are within our city. Section three, this section preempts us as a city or any jurisdiction to prevent or prohibit shelters or certain housing types. The bill added a section into law that says, "A code city, which is Gig Harbor, shall not prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones in which residential units or hotels are allowed." "A code city shall not prohibit indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zone which hotels are allowed." These requirements are effective or were effective at the end of September and did require city action. And the primary reason for that, the state law then preempts cities from disallowing these uses, and without having regulations within our zoning code, there would be no process for staff to take through if these projects were to come in for a permit. And so you'll see later on in the presentation how we've addressed that within the zoning code on a temporary basis. Section four did not apply to the City of Gig Harbor because we're a code city. Section five amended the Growth Management Act to prohibit jurisdictions from utilizing interim zoning controls or moratoriums to prohibit building permit applications. So there were several cities within Puget Sound area who were considering putting a building permit, moratorium on permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters. And the state here essentially said, can't do that. They're, they're allowed, you can't effectively put a moratorium or disallow them in any other way. And then section six added the definitions of emergency housing, emergency shelter, and moderate income household. I will say that some of the definitions for extremely low household, et cetera, are in need of some clarification from the state. And the city, as well as our A W C Association of Washington City Partners, are seeking that clarification because if we're being required to plan for and analyze and accommodate all of the moderate, low, very low, extremely low households, we need to be able to define what that is so that we can accurately measure if our strategies are working or not. So the interim zoning regulations that are currently in place, they allow transitional housing, permanent supportive housing as conditionally approved uses in all of the zones except for our P I and E V zones. And it added a chapter 1755 that added specific conditions to those types of projects, and I will take us to the ordinance to go through those in a few moments. Additionally, for emergency shelters and emergency housing, those have been added again, on an interim basis as conditionally allowed within the R B 2 D B, B 2 C 1, and P C D C. And if you'll recall from earlier slides, the emergency shelters and emergency housing are required to be allowed in any zones in which hotels are currently permitted within the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. And so those are the zones, the R B 2, D B, B 2, C 1, and P C D C, where hotels are currently permitted. We have some maps. I know that these may be hard to see, and we'll be happy to send out larger versions of this for the commission and the public's edification, but on the left-hand side of your screen in green, those are the zones where transitional and permanent supportive housing are conditionally allowed. And if you'll recall from the state regulations, we have to allow them in zones where, excuse me, where dwelling units and hotels are allowed. So you'll see that that's most of our city. On the right-hand side are where emergency shelters and emergency housing would be allowed, and those are the zones, again, where hotels are currently permitted within the city. See a few of you looking at the map still, so I'll just pause here. So the proposed planning commission actions, we would like the commission to, we're having the work session today. If there's an additional work session that you would like, again, if you have specific questions, information that we can bring and get back to you, we're happy to have another work session. We are requesting that the Planning Commission have a public hearing on these interim regulations. And that not only would be a way for the public to voice their concerns or ideas regarding this to you, it could also help the commission in crafting recommendations to council. And what that may look like, if you, as the commission, think that the interim regulations are great, the way that they were drafted, then that could be your recommendation. If there are some modifications or tweaks to some of the interim regulations that the commission would like to see, that could also be a recommendation. What we can't do, as I discussed previously in the presentation, we cannot effectively prohibit these within the city. So a recommendation of disallowing these would not be the most helpful recommendation in, in moving this work forward. So let's see if I can take you to the ordinance, and we can just go over briefly. If you get motions to close your eyes for a moment, and I'll tell you when we're there. So again, as I mentioned here, can you all see the the ordinance language on your screen? Yes, okay. So section two of the ordinance discusses the new chapter 1755 that was added, again, on interim basis for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. And why this was added, the state regulations did allow for certain conditions to be put on these projects in terms of density, occupancy, things like that. And so in the Planning Commission, considering their recommendation to council, it would be very helpful if the commission could discuss and deliberate eventually on if some of these you don't think are germane, and you don't think they're helpful, or if they need to be tweaked, or if there's additional regulations for each of these types that you would like to see put in the final ordinance that becomes codified. But just to go through them briefly, what staff has added in here as additional regulations for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. And just again, I will mention that these are, the uses are conditionally allowed within the zones that allow dwelling units and hotels, so they are not outright permitted use. They would require a public hearing in front of the hearing examiner for, for these. So A is talking about the maximum number of dwelling units on a property shall not exceed what's allowed in the zoning classification. Essentially, this was, this, we are allowed to, to limit based on density and occupancy. So A is trying to get to the point that we wouldn't allow the affordable housing units to be increased over what would otherwise be allowed for another housing project. B is that the maximum occupant load of these units shall not exceed one person for every 200 square feet of habitable space, and that is based on the International Building Code, and that is what our building division looks at for other types of residential units. What the what the intent here was to not fill a home with too many folks where it would be unsafe from a building fire safety sanitation standpoint. The maximum occupancy of a bedroom within these structures shall be minimum of 70 square feet per person. And this, again, is very typical for fire, building safety, sanitation purposes. All bedrooms within these units shall comply with the criteria of the International Residential Code. So we need to make sure that these units are, in fact, habitable for folks. We're not going to put homeless folks or folks in need of affordable housing in a structure that we would not put any other human in. They deserve to be in a a structure that is safe for them to live in. No permanent supportive housing or transitional housing unit may be located within half a mile of another property which contains permanent supportive housing or transitional housing. And this would be vesting for this particular E would be based on date of complete application. This number, or letter E, we took from two other cities that had gone through this process of the interim regulations prior to us. And it was to get to residential concerns regarding having a proliferation of the supportive housing or transitional housing, turning neighborhoods into transitional housing. Those were some of the concerns that were heard in other jurisdictions. Whether or not we would like to keep this one, again, looking for the commission's input and the public's input. And all operators of these types of housing shall utilize the Pierce County Homeless Information Management System. And that is the Pierce County Homeless Information Management System requires that, and ensures that the operators are properly licensed, that they're getting their inspections, that the folks are being treated in a proper manner. And then G, we just essentially codify by reference the state definitions for permanent supportive housing that we don't have within our municipal code. This is actually 1775, I think. So this may be incorrect. I will look at that. But there is another section that has been added that just addresses emergency shelters and emergency housing. And similar to the above, emergency shelters and emergency housing are conditionally allowed in zones only where hotels are allowed. So again, these are not permitted uses. They will require a conditional use permit and hearing in front of the city's hearing examiner. And then regulations for these, occupancy of emergency shelter or housing shall be limited to no more than 10 families or 40 people, whichever is fewer. No more than one continuously operating emergency shelter, and no more than one continuously operating emergency housing facility shall be in operation at the same time within city limits. No emergency shelter or emergency housing facility may be located within a half a mile of another one, so that would be mean coordination with any shelters that are within Pierce County unincorporated. No emergency housing facility or shelter shall be located within a half a mile of permanent supportive housing or transitional housing units. So that would require us to map out those uses that were described in the section above, and ensure that these uses under the emergency shelters are not being incompatibly placed too close to the others. And then for the, then we define them here in E N F because, again, we don't have those definitions within our Gig Harbor Municipal Code. And then lastly, again, for the emergency shelters, we do require them to utilize Pierce County Homeless Information Management System. All right, well, that. I think I'm on my last slide anyway. So I know that was a lot of information that was put forward to the commission. But essentially, we have these interim regulations, and we're asking the commission to consider the interim regulations and to consider if there are ways that we can make them better prior to recommending to council the formal final regulations that will be codified within the municipal code. And Chair, that concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. You're right, that's a lot of information, but we did, we did have a chance to review some of that information before the meeting, thanks to the enclosures that Michelle sent out.
Volume control, volume thirty, volume seventy-five.
So anyway, I will open the floor for discussion and questions.
Greg, I'd like to ask Katrina about the issue of emergency shelters, particularly in the sense of like a warming shelter or something that would be available in the sense of a disaster, let's say a major fire, or some, some other natural disasters. Churches, maybe the hospital, or buildings with emergency power might be needed in those cases if we had to suddenly house a number of people. I didn't really see any provision in the ordinance that would allow for those kinds of shelters to be opened up immediately in the event that there was a sudden and urgent need for them.
That's a great question, and we, we're seeking clarification from that, from the state currently, and we'll respond back to your, back to your question. What we've received preliminarily is that emergency shelters that are defined for the purposes of this this bill that we're addressing are not the same as for natural disaster emergencies. So that is a great point, and we will likely need to seek to clarify that within this, that, you know, if there is a natural disaster, that that is different than emergency shelters for the purposes of affordable or homelessness.
Okay, thanks, Katrina.
Tom, you have a question? You're muted?
Sorry. Further on that question, am I correct that the temporary rule here limits emergency shelters to one in the city, and therefore limits the number of people who could be served to 40 for this, for the entire city? That's what the words seem to say to me. Is that correct?
That is correct. As currently drafted.
Where did that come from?
So again, in, in considering these regulations, we did consider what other cities had already undertaken within Pierce County, and so that is a that is a regulation that several other cities had. And again, as this came forward, we hadn't had the opportunity to go through a public process to determine the public's temperature, if you will, about how many shelters they would like to have within the city. And so for the interim regulations, it was chosen to have one within the city, noting that the Planning Commission would be considering these regulations. And if they wanted to consider additional shelters being allowed, then that could be done through this process.
Well, it just seems to me that we really need to take a close look at this. I mean, a city of 12,000-plus residents, if we did encounter an emergency, might well want to do something to keep more than 40 people warm. You know what I mean?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, I, I do understand, and similar to what Commissioner Krosick stated. Yeah, and Commissioner Brown, I I I do understand and um similar to what Commissioner Posick stated. I think we need to make a differentiation here in our regulations that go forward, the the formal regulations that. What we're speaking about in this ordinance and for this regulation are different than for a natural disaster emergency. And so for a natural disaster emergency, for instance, if churches were wanting to open up for. For sleeping or whatever that would be at that time, that would be different than than the emergency shelters that are covered under this. Ordinance.
Is is I I didn't. I didn't see that when I read through this. Is that explained anywhere in this documentation?
No, and that's what I was mentioning after the previous question was that we need to seek clarification on that and bring that back to the commission. And it will likely be an amendment that you could all consider.
Okay, Shannon.
Uh so do we have i- is there anything already in place that's emerged that? Is with regard to the other type of emergency shelters? Is there anything at all already existing about that?
There that we don't have anything on the books right now in terms of um. Land use for allowing those types of shelters or emergency uses. And so that may be another recommendation that comes out of this process.
Okay, thank you.
I do know that for, you know, th- there's nothing really on the books, but I will say from going through um. Uh COVID and then as some of the, you know, temperatures are dropping. We have allowed churches, for instance, Chapel Hill, that wouldn't typically have large drive-through vaccine events. We've been able to make allowances for those through the code, but I definitely think that. You know, unfortunately, these emergency situations seem to be coming closer together, so it may benefit us for a recommendation to have that codified.
Thank you.
It it you know, as I was researching this a little bit, the, you know, kind of backtracking the where did this come from? It 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 seems that the intent from the state was is specifically addressing. Affordable housing and homelessness. And and so this this new, I guess you would call it a law. Um was was a direct result of that effort. And so. Um it's just working its way down to the city level, which we are compelled to comply with. My question. Um or a question I have is. Who funds these things? And I ask that with respect to, you know, are there. Developers that are going to be clamoring to be the first in line to to build these shelters. To get some piece of a federal pie or a state pie. And it so what what is where does where does that all, how does that all work?
Typically, where these are coming from is the nonprofit world. So where where we see them, uh for instance, um Kitsap Homes of Compassion or. Um Pierce Homes of Compassion, they're nonprofit um groups that work with. Uh work to get federal grants or um local grants in order to manage. Uh permanent supportive housing or transitional housing. So for instance, I believe Kitsap. Or Kitsap Homes of Compassion, they have, I think, ten or twelve homes buried within the Kitsap region. Where there's four. Four bedrooms and four individual people living within them. So to answer your question, it's typically nonprofit. Sector that's doing these things and not not typically developers. Where we see the developers coming in is on the other side of affordable housing. And they are participating with us in the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners in looking at. Um tax incentives or, you know, where the, you know, where land can be donated that they would construct. Or help construct affordable housing. They're also interested in um development agreements or things like that that would require, you know, ten twenty-five percent of units. Constructed to be affordable for some other trade-off, but we don't typically typically see developers. Constructing the emergency shelters or going into the business of transitional housing.
Well, I I would expect um there's going to be. Uh I'm surprised there was only one comment at the city council level, but I I says that may be related to lack of. Awareness. Uh because Tacoma is ahead of us on this. And if you read the social media. I mean, people, it's, you know, everyone is gonna say, yeah, that's fine, but not in my backyard. And um I think that we're gonna encounter that all over, you know, Gig Harbor. Um so I would expect a huge pushback, you know, in that regard. The other thing is that help help me understand. As far as the various designations go, I think it's based on the local median incomes. And if I if that's true and I'm understanding it correctly, that would put a. Seemingly a significantly larger. Well, maybe not a large population, but that the threshold. For extremely low income would be much higher in Gig Harbor than it would be. In a place like, you know, someplace in Tacoma, for example.
Yeah, that that's a really good question and that is something that we're gonna tackle. Not through this process, but through the housing action plan or the housing assessment that we're gonna do. We hope to get a consultant on board who specializes in in housing and kind of that is their wheelhouse. And they'll be able to answer those questions in the process in advance of the co-op plan. Um so unfortunately, we don't have that information as it relates to uh the interim regulations. And that's simply because the policy actions that are required. We were allowed to punt, so they weren't immediate action like what we had to do with the zoning code. But that's something in the in the next process that we will be looking at. Um and to address the the public comment, I do think that, you know, we will be getting the word out more on this. The state effectively, I think, knew that this was going to happen. Uh, you know, kind of the pushback, and that's why they preempted us from disallowing the uses. And so really through this process and what the commission, what we would like for you to consider is. The regulations as they've been drafted on an interim basis, are they effective to protect the citizens and to protect? Um the city from any um perceived or real harm? And if they're not, then how can we amend them um to be the best that they can be within the parameters put forward by the state? And I do think that the messaging um from the city is going to be important. And we will work to ensure that information that we put out to the public in advance of any hearing that the commission has. And our presentations effectively say what what we're doing and why and what the parameters are. To try to keep that heat off of the commission.
Other questions? Go ahead, uh Tom.
Good, could you say a little bit more about? The protection aspects about the, what are we playing defense against here? I I didn't really understand your your point.
So there's some items and you could see them in the regulations that we put forward, for instance, um density. That's something that, you know, if someone lives in a single-family neighborhood, they expect it to be to look and feel single-family. And so that that could have been a a an a harm to a neighbor or a neighborhood. And that's why we put that in there. We are also allowed to um regulate based on safety and. So in terms of um. You know, occupancy level, that's why we put in the square footage requirements that, you know, you need to have a certain number of square footage per human. Um to protect them for the emergency shelters. And we're still looking into this, but. There's, I believe, Bonnie Lake and another city require um. The the local police department to go in on an annual basis and do kind of a check. And that's really to ensure the public health and safety component. We want to make sure that um. Uh you know, fecal matters being just um disposed of properly, that there's not. Um, you know, drugs or paraphernalia, you know, lying around. And so. We don't have that right now in the regulations. However, other cities are putting in some of those more health safety components. Into these regulations and that's something the commission could consider.
Well, while I I've got the mic, who is the author of of this uh the these draft ordinances? I mean, is it someone on your staff? Is it this city attorney? Uh who who composes these things?
Um it's a a combination of staff and the the city's attorney's office.
Thank you. Thanks.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, uh some unrelated questions. First of all, in the House bill, there was a section on uh racial disparities. And I didn't see anything in the ordinance on that. How are we gonna go about identifying that and complying with the uh? State law on that.
Uh Commissioner, we will have to get back to you on that. I didn't, um based on what our attorney said. We didn't have an immediate action for that, but we'll look into that and bring that information back to you.
Okay, second question. Uh one of the things I would certainly be interested in is uh exploring the concept of tiny houses. In trying to find some locations for them where they might be permitted. Uh that's more of a comment than a than a question. Uh and then lastly, uh do we have some provisions for coordination with the county as to where? Uh they may be locating these in the vicinity of Gig Harbor uh so that we don't bunch these things up?
That's another great question and we do not have that in the ordinance currently, so that's something additional that the commission could recommend.
Okay, thank you.
So it it may be in the reading already, but um. Remind me if it is the, where do we stand on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two? If if, for example, a. NGO came in and said, we're ready to set up an emergency shelter and we've got the perfect spot, we've got the land. Do you gotta say yes?
Yeah, so it would be a conditional use permit. They would need to fill out conditional use permit, you know, if there's CPO required, go through all the typical process, but yes. We would have to take in the permit and process it. And it would be subject to those regulations that we added into the seventeen fifty-five and seventeen seventy-five that I discussed earlier. Those would be the currently the only regulations that they would have to apply for. So. In terms of your question, that's a great frame of reference for the commission when they're considering um additional. You know, additions to this is, you know, how this, all of those different um. Regulations are what staff would evaluate a use against. You know, does it comply with this? Does it comply with that? And so, you know, that's kind of is a pretty good frame of reference for, I think, for the commission to consider. You know, how how it would actually be. Worked out at the Cayman on a staff level for a permit.
And and what is a typical timeline for a a CUP?
Um three to six months.
So it could happen pretty quickly.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Shannon.
Uh Katrina, there was something in there about the accessory dwelling. As as a use and it was kind of confusing to me and I was wondering if it was. It almost sounded like accessory dwellings could be used to accommodate this, but they would not be required to. Undergo the same requirements as if they were being used for something else. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, and that's a very um keen observation. So essentially, this bill was a conglomerate of three or four housing bills. That were attempted to pass last session. One of them was specifically on ADUs. One of them was specifically on their racial disparity um that the other question was about and then emergency shelters. So the accessory dwelling units, there were some. The bill at the time that was going forward was to allow accessory dwelling units on every lot in urban area. That received pushback um for for different reasons. However, we do know that ADUs can be a very valuable tool for affordable housing and kind of the the missing middle or, you know. Uh where there's either very high-level um expensive housing or. You know, apartments, right? So it's kind of um um the missing middle is what, you know, kind of the new term is. So like ADUs are an affordable housing tool and they can be used. Um to support people who need affordable housing, but they are not subject to these regulations. I will say with that, um there's other bills that are going to be proposed this. Session to allow ADUs to be allowed everywhere again. Um there's also going to be a bill that's established or that's looked at to consider abolishment of single-family. Residential zoning and the city's following um all of these bills very closely. And we'll report back on those to you all, but um I hope that answers the question.
Did you have another question, Shannon? Alright. Well, um. As I intimated earlier, I think this is gonna be a hot potato. And um we are likely to get plenty of animated input. Which. It I I think we're gonna need to be careful that we. Ensure that people are felt heard. And we. Consider all the input that to the extent that we can, but we are obviously working within um very. Specific confines with what we can and can't allow. More specifically, what we can disallow. So um this is gonna be a a real. A real challenge for us as a commission in our relationship with the public.
I I a hundred percent firmly believe that you all are super professional and will do an excellent job. And if there's any thing that you would like in advance of the hearing that we have, um let staff know and we're more than willing to. You know, put out um information or. Or assist the commission any way that we can. Uh with that being said, Chair, is would the commission like one more work session where staff can come back and answer some of the questions that were asked tonight prior to the hearing? Or would you like to conduct the hearing at your at the next available time?
What do y'all think? I see at least Shannon nodding her head.
The the reason I was nodding is because two of our members aren't here. And I think it would be helpful for them to have the opportunity to ask staff questions. You know, so we're all on the same page when we start working through this.
That's that's very acceptable to us. We can um have another work session where we can answer questions and then bring back. We did have the the question about the difference between emergency shelters for the purposes of affordable housing and homelessness versus. Um the natural disasters. Some uh look at some safety. Uh related items, look at the bill in terms of the racial disparity and what we're required to do with that. And then consider the coordination with Pierce County and how that may work. Think that those were our. Follow-up items to the commission.
And and if I could suggest perhaps reaching out. To uh Commissioner Soltes and Bennett and having them review this and. having them review this and perhaps going one-on-one with them or or two-on-one to maybe answer their questions. So we're not wasting the time of of the entire commission, just, you know, with them asking the same questions perhaps. And then in that way, we could have it as maybe not just a single agenda item, for example, at a meeting, but maybe we can knock something else out at that same meeting.
That's perfect. I think your next meeting, you'll be discussing short-term rentals as well. And so Michelle or Mandy, could you email the recording of this tonight to Commissioner Soltes and Bennett? And then offer for time for Carl or I, for both of us to meet with them?
Of course, and they were sent the link to all the materials for tonight, too, just so they could review it, even though they weren't going to be in attendance.
Perfect. But we will ensure that they have the opportunity to be brought up to speed, Chair.
Okay, great. Well, I really appreciate your expertise and helping us understand all this, and it wouldn't surprise me if if one or more of us develops a a an additional question between now and the time that it pops up on the agenda again anyway. And so I would certainly welcome anyone to not feel that that I'm trying to suppress any additional discussion. Because if if additional questions come up, then certainly we want to. So, John, you have your hand up again?
Yes, I do. Katrina, would you add tiny houses to your list?
Oh, yep, yep, I have that on here, too.
Okay, and Greg, one one thing in response to your comment there on people, this being a hot potato, I think maybe I think you better said this, or somebody said this at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think there's a lot of people that are going to say, oh, I'm against housing for low income or poor people. I think where people will come and get excited about this is when there's actually a proposal in front of the city for this to be discussed. So that's where you're going to get the people saying, I think this is a great idea, but not in my neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay. Carl, you turn your mic off there just briefly. Was there something you wanted to add?
No, Chair, I was just going to note that Commissioner Kozic had his hand up.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, everybody, so guess the only other item on the agenda is future business next meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I will, I think maybe I mentioned last time, but I just wanted to remind everyone that I am not going to be available for the next meeting.
Yeah, what is the date of that meeting?
January 20th.
I will also be off the continent.
Oh.
Okay.
Michelle, perhaps we should send out an email to the whole commission and ask for attendance, because we we're going to have too many folks gone. It might make sense to postpone to a time when vast majority can be with us.
And they would have to nominate a chair at the beginning of that meeting if both Commissioner Kozic and and the chair are out. So it'd be, I mean, it can be done, of course, it's in the bylaws, I believe, so we can, we can make it work if we have, if we still have a quorum.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, Michelle can send the email out, and we'll, we can communicate with the commission. And if we have, you know, three people gone, maybe we consider postponing until February. I know that's not necessarily the most ideal, but we want to make sure that these are kind of hefty items. And I think it benefits having all of you in participating.
Yeah, I I agree, especially the short-term rentals, because that's going to be, that's going to be another hot potato.
Yeah, it is another contentious item, for sure.
So. Okay. Well, I suppose another option is is January 27 instead of January 20. But the like that, I think relates more to what the, you know, what the work plan is, you know, going forward. And so I'll let you all, Katrina and Carl, decide about that. I think we asked a lot from our volunteers, and we're going to have a busy year, so so having an off-schedule meeting may not be ideal, but maybe you could ask that question in the email, too.
Are those of you commissioners that are on the meeting today, what a meeting on the 27th work for you?
Like Greg, I'm going to be off the continent, and I'm gone for till the 31st.
I I will be back.
And I don't know if we have DRB that night or not.
Okay, we'll we'll figure this out offline and communicate with the commission about what we're gonna, what we'll be able to do based on availability.
Okay. All right, any closing thoughts? Hearing none. I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Wait here a second. I think I did. Great. All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So 5:56, January 6. Thank you very much, everybody.
Chair, if I could, before I, before we sign off, and it's okay if it's off the record.